Welcome, everybody. Good evening. It is 6:04 on this October 17th. I'm going to go ahead and call this 6:00 PM meeting to order. If I could go ahead and have the City Secretary call roll, please.
Mitchell? Tobias?
Here.
Hyzer?
Here.
Flores Cale?
Here.
Zuniga?
Present.
Bradshaw?
Parsley?
Here.
Okay, we have five present. We do have a quorum. So next up, we will have citizens' comments. This is the time for individuals to come up and speak in referencing any agenda items. We ask that you hold your comments to three minutes. If there's anybody here that'd like to go in and come up and speak. It is now open. Seeing nobody, we're going to go ahead and close citizens' comments. Next, we have executive session. Anybody would like to read it?
I'll read it. Hold on, let me get my stuff. All right, pursuant to Chapter 551 Texas Government Code, the City Council reserves the right to convene into executive session from time to time as deemed necessary during this meeting. The City Council may convene into executive session pursuant to any lawful exception contained in Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code, including any or all the following topics: pending or contemplated litigation settlement agreement, or to seek the advice of the city attorney and attorneys concerning legal issues pursuant to Section 551.071 Texas Government Code and Section 11.05 Texas Disciplinary Rules of Professional Conduct; discussion regarding water infrastructure and related agreements in Pressure Plane 3; possible purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real estate pursuant to Section 551.072 to deliberate the purchase of real property for public purpose; acquisition of property for transportation improvements and related infrastructure; personnel matters pursuant to Section 551.074 convening to executive session pursuant to Section 551.087 Texas Government Code to deliberate regarding the offer or of economic incentives to one or more business prospects that the city seeks to have locate, stay, or expand in or near the city; Project Heatstroke, Project Uplift, Project Hot Pursuit, Project Underground, Project The Stars Are Bright, Project Tiupet.
Motion taken now, motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, we are adjourned. All right, good evening, everyone. The time is 7:02 PM. It is Tuesday, October the 17th, and I'd like to call this regularly scheduled City Council meeting to order. Would all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the City Secretary please call the roll?
Mitchell?
Here.
Tobias?
Present.
Hyzer?
Here.
Flores Cale?
Here.
Zuniga?
Present.
Bradshaw?
Here.
Parsley?
Here.
All right, all members are present. We have a quorum next up. Approval of the minutes.
Mayor, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion to approve the minutes for City Council Special Minutes for October the 2nd and the regular meeting for the same day, October 2nd, 2023.
Second.
All right, motion by Mayor Protem, seconded by Councilmember Parsley, that we approve the minutes as written. Is there discussion on that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, motion carries seven to zero. Next up is citizen comments period. At this time, we ask anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak on any item to please do so. We ask that you limit your comments to three minutes and that you direct those comments to the mayor and council. We also ask that you fill out a citizen comments form and submit that to either myself or the City Secretary. I have two forms in front of me. First up is Ms. Susan Reina.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Uh-oh.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Susan Reina, and I am here tonight as a resident of Kyle and as a member of nonprofit here in town, Preservation Associates Incorporated. I just wanted to thank Councilmember Zuniga for coming out last month along with other members of our community and speaking at our history event at the library. And also let everybody know that tomorrow night, we'll have Councilmember Tobias speaking at the library at 6:00 PM to tell us about what it was like to grow up here in Kyle and that's some of our more recent history. So every month, we're meeting on the third Wednesday of the month at the library at 6:00 PM, just trying to let people know about the history of Kyle. So I just wanted to let everybody know and ask you to come on out. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. All right, next up, Ms. Cynthia Bentley.
Good evening, council, mayor and council. My name is Cynthia Bentley. I am a resident here of Kyle, 350 Paddington Drive, and also the president of Unforgettable Families and Friends. It's a nonprofit, 501(c)(3), giving back to the community.
Hi, my name is Betty Conley. I'm the president of the Kyle Area Senior Zone and speaking on behalf of the Pillows of Peace. It is, the mission of Pillows of Peace is to bring reassurance to many women and children who suffer from the hands of domestic violence. Pillows of Peace collects pillows to the local battered shelters so survivors can find comfort and know that we care. Pillows of Peace was the brainchild of Mary Shoteis. She's a nurse from Belmont, Texas initially as a donation of various items to local battered women's shelter in the greater New Orleans area. The Kyle and Buta Kowanis has partnered and helped with the Pillows of Peace, some of the past partners of the Kyle Police Department, Ladies and Gents Professional Hair Care, Hays County Human Resources, Hays County ESD Number Five, Kyle Fire Department, Lehman High School, Sam Marcus Kowanis, Kyle Area Senior Zone, Buta Quilters, Kettle Corn, Kyle Lowes, Kyle Walmart Supercenter, Kyle Coles, Kyle Citizens Police Alumni Academy Association, South Park Agency, and Jack C. Hayes High School Honor Society. Items were distributed by Hays County Women's Center, H O M E, Salvation Army, Southside Community Center, Austin Restoration Ministries, and various other unsheltered nonprofits in South Austin and various locations affected by the Hurricane Harvey along the coastal area. The vision of Pillow Peace is that a survivor will find comfort and keep the pillow as a reminder that we care and that we find inspiration, empowerment, and peace as they rest each day and night to strengthen their mind, body, and soul and to help end the battle against domestic violence. The Kowanis Club of Kyle Buta, in partnership with Unforgettable Families and Friends, has collected and donated over 6,000 pillows in Hays, Travis, and surrounding counties. This year in 2023, the collection date is November 4th at the Kyle Walmart Superstore and Kyle Coles from 9:00 to 1:00 PM. We hope everybody would participate and come there. The Pillow of Peace is now in Louisiana, Mississippi, and Texas.
One more addition to that. This year, for the second time, the Kyle Fire Department and also the Kyle Police Department will have another friendly competition to see which organization will collect the most pillows. But you know, that's only a sidebar to have some fun. The initial thing is for us to give comfort to those that really are in need. Thank you.
Thank you. Those are the only comment forms that are in front of me. Is there anyone else who wishes to come forward and speak? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close citizens' comments. This comments is now closed. Next up is agenda order. Does anybody have any items they wish to move around on the agenda? All right, seeing none, we'll move to appointments. Agenda item number four, approve a resolution appointing 14 individuals to fill vacancies on the Kyle Area Youth Advisory Committee. Ms. Espinoza.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Mariana Espinoza, Parks and Recreation Director. So today is a pretty exciting night because it has been two years since the city of Kyle has had a Kyle Area Youth Advisory Committee, which is also known as Kayak. All right. Let's see the presentation here. But I'll go ahead and move on. So Kayak, the Kyle Area Youth Advisory Committee, was on break and then due to COVID, they kind of just dispersed a little with everyone having to go remote. And then after COVID, it was a little difficult to get everyone back together. And during that time, there were some staff changes. So now the Parks and Recreation Department oversees the Kyle Area Youth Advisory Committee, and it is led by our Recreation Manager, Amy Garcia. Kayak includes students ages 14 through 18 that are interested in learning about municipal government and in serving the community. Kayak meets monthly, the third Wednesday of the month, at 6:30 PM at City Hall, with their first meeting being tomorrow. Each candidate completed an interview with our Recreation Manager, Amy, with our Recreation Staff, and with Councilmember Hyzer. And we want to thank Councilmember Hyzer for all his work that he has done making sure that Kayak gets up and running, and that is really a big reason why we are here tonight appointing these students this evening. So I'm going to call up Amy, who is going to introduce our appointees for this evening.
Hello, Council Mayor, Amy Garcia, Recreation Manager. So I have the pleasure of announcing everyone, so I want to thank everyone that did attend tonight. So first, on the list will be Benjamin Grisham, Donovan Santin, if you can stand up just after I announce your name. Donovan Santin, Gavin Resendez Lopez, Isabella Green, Terrence Grant Jr., Gabriella Belmonte, Charlotte Garza, Alexa Smith, Alexia, or Alexa Smith, Joshua Powers, Jackson Jewell, Sofia Ramirez, Alicia Bush, and Mirabella Dietz and Mason Coleman.
And we also wanted to add Anthony Jaramillo, and it's Gabriel Belmonte. Just a couple corrections of that, it's okay. And Benjamin Grisham and Alicia Bush are not here this evening. But we're really excited to be working with all of you, and we look forward to all the great things you guys have to do this upcoming year. So you may take a seat. So Mayor and Council, you'll have two options or more if you decide. One is to approve the appointment of the 13 applicants, not 14, or to deny the appointment of one or more of the applicants. And if you have any questions.
Councilmember Hyzer.
Thank you, Mariana, and thank you to everybody applied to be on Kayak. I couldn't be more excited for that this group is back up and running. And I look forward to seeing you all tomorrow night for the first meeting. With that, I'd like to make a motion to approve the appointment of the 14 applicants to the 2023 class of Kayak.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Hyzer, seconded by Councilmember Flores Cale, that we denied. Wait, no, that wasn't it. We approve the nominees to the Kyle Area Youth Advisory Committee, also known as Kayak. Is there discussion on that motion? Mayor Protem.
I'll let Danielle go first.
Thank you. So I want to thank Councilmember Hyzer for being so adamant to get this project back and running. And I am really excited to see Mr. Jackson Jewell, probably doesn't remember me, but he went to school with my daughter. So I've seen them since they were little. It's exciting to see you here. And also I have one of my own students here, which makes me super excited to see Anthony here meet you. So welcome to Kayak and to the city of Kyle.
Same thing, I'd like to thank Hyzer. You did a good job, sir, for bringing this back. As you can see, there's an overwhelming response for it. I know when you first brought it to my attention, I reached out to you for somebody that used to be on it, and they were very excited. This person's attending college right now, and they want to send congratulations as well.
Councilmember Flores Cale.
I just want to say thank you to all the applicants and to the parents who was probably going to drive the kids, drop them off. I know the parent thing, and so thank you for also being active and involved. This is really important, seeing as these kids are going to be the future for us. And so them being involved will make a difference in the city, Lord willing, if they stay. Sometimes kids want to leave the nest, but my hope is that we can retain these kids to be great adults that understand the government and understand the processes within the city to make not only a better city, but a better world. So with that, again, I want to say thank you to the parents and to the students.
All right. Any further discussion? Do you want to have the kiddos come up for a photo? All right, before we do that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. If those inductees, you'd like to come to the front, we'll take a photo.
All right, you're going to have to, you're going to have to scooch in a whole bunch on those ends. Can y'all scooch in a little bit more on the side? Yeah, we can, if y'all can stagger a little bit. If you're a little bit shorter, go to the front. Don't block out the short people. And if you can't see me, I can't see you. That's the general rule. All right, I think we got everyone now. All right. Oh, wait, Flores Cale, you're a little, all right, there we go. All right, on the count of three. One, two, three. Perfect, all right.
All right, next up is agenda item number five, recognition of quilt recipients for the Quilts of Valor Program. Raise your hand if you've ever heard of the Quilts of Valor Program. All right, there's a few. We've been doing this program every year now in the city of Kyle for, I don't know, four or five years now. Ms. Teresa Moreno started that program originally. Now Ms. Karen Herman is taking over, as well as other folks. In a nutshell, the Quilts of Valor Program, they are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit that works nationally to recognize veterans who have served and have been touched by war. And they hand-make or hand-machine quilts and provide those as a means of comfort to those veterans who have served in the past. And every year, we hand those out, not normally on a council meeting night. This one was a little bit special to me because of one of the recipients having been not only touched by war, but by the devastating Oak Grove fires. And so I wanted to bring these folks up and just recognize that they are the recipients of these wonderful handmade quilts and ask the community to also honor them. So the first up is going to be Sergeant Vela. And if y'all just want to stand right over here. Sergeant Vela served from 2003 to 2014 in the Army. His list of commendations took me quite a while to read in the ceremony, but he was ultimately honorably discharged in February of 2014. We thank him for his service, especially for Operation Iraqi Freedom and Operation Enduring Freedom from the 101st Airborne Division. The second, we'll hold the applause. We're going to bring them all, we're going to bring them all up at the same time. The second is Lieutenant Colonel David Matt Easty. He served from 1984 to 2013, 29 years in total for the Army. He was the, received the Army Commendation with Valor for Services During Operation Enduring Freedom, while working and serving, receiving three Bronze Stars from Operation Desert Storm, Desert Shield, Iraqi Freedom, and Enduring Freedom. Thank you, Colonel, for your service. And then finally, we have Sergeant Mike Hines. He served in the Army from 1970 to 1972 during the Vietnam era and was a valuable interpreter and interrogator working specifically in the non-native language of Thai and working also in very top-secret rooms, helping to encode and discover various transmissions. So Sergeant Mike Hines has lived just west of Kyle, and here, just a couple months ago, a devastating fire consumed his home, and he lost much of his property, including his art and art collection and artistic paints and brushes. We, you know, no one deserves to lose a home, especially not a veteran. And so I just want to say thank you to these men for their service, and thank you to the Quilts of Valor Program for trying to help be a comfort in these times. We appreciate you all very much. Let's give them all a round of applause. And now, we'll actually come around, I think, with just the three of them. We'll take a quick photograph. Appreciate it very much.
All right, same rule. If I can't see your face, you're not going to be in the photo. On the count of three. One, two, three. Perfect, thank y'all.
Our Quilts of Valor group is called Kyle and Buta Freedom Quilts, and they collect quilts, and we are honored to be able to award them to the veterans. We also want to say gigantic thank you to Mayor Mitchell for having a part of our ceremony back there. He was able to read off all the details about their services and stuff. So it was important for him to be able to do that for us. So thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Okay, next up is agenda item number six, a proclamation recognizing fentanyl poisoning awareness month. Councilmember Zuniga.
Oh, yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, I would like to start by addressing the importance and sensitivity of this proclamation. We are honored here tonight by many of the families who lost loved ones due to this poison that is in our community. And I want to thank personally Janelle and Brandon Rodriguez and all the families that are here tonight. They're volunteers of the Forever 15 Project for working with me on this proclamation. Fentanyl poisoning is real. It's taken too many of our good kids in this community. It is, and it has impacted all our schools since last year. It has caused pain and suffering to families, friends, and loved ones. Recently, I attended a homecoming parade, and I witnessed families and friends walking in the parade carrying pictures of the six children we've lost. And I was heartbroken because this is every parent's nightmare, to lose a child because of one bad decision. This proclamation is to the families here and to the children that are still grieving and confused about how this this happened in our community and in our schools. And to let them know that we care, we feel your loss, and we will work to help you and support our law enforcement to find those responsible in our neighborhoods. We will not stop raising awareness, and we will strengthen the anti-fentanyl campaign by supporting prevention programs so that we can be, so that we can better engage our Hays County, our school district, our police department to defeat this danger and arrest and remove drug dealers that are poisoning our children in this community. After I read this proclamation, I will pass the floor to Mayor Protem, Michael Tobias, so he can read a statement from Hays C I S D. As some of you are aware, tonight, our school board members have a meeting, so they were kind enough to pass along a statement on behalf of the district. And then I'll invite Ms. Janelle Rodriguez to come speak, share a few words. So, City Council proclamation, whereas illicit fentanyl is being used to make fake prescription pills and found in 50 states in common street drugs like cocaine, MDMA, and heroin, the Texas Department of Public Safety has seized over 431 million lethal doses of fentanyl across the state. Texas House Bill 3144 establishes October as Fentanyl Poisoning Awareness Month. To help increase awareness during month of October, DPS launched resources and videos of victims through the One Pill Kills Campaign. Whereas illicit manufactured fentanyl is synthetic and potent, up to 50 times stronger than heroin, 100 times stronger than morphine, a little, as a few milligrams, can be lethal. These dealers are dangerously mixing this illicit manufactured fentanyl and disguising it among common drugs to increase their profits. Assume any prescription pill you see online is counterfeit. Do not make a deadly decision. And whereas according to the CDC, fentanyl is associated with more deaths of Americans under 50 than any other cause of death, including heart, disease, cancer, and other accidents, 35% of Americans, teenagers aged 13 to 17, don't know enough about fentanyl to understand its danger. And whereas since the summer of 2022, our school district and community has lost six students to fentanyl poisoning and reported seven student overdose, seven student potential poisonings from 2022 to 2023, resulting in an anti-overdose campaign. This anti-overdose campaign has involved training for staff to recognize and respond to overdoses and engage students to offer solutions about confronting the issue. In September of 2023, Texas High School Coaches Association and Hays C I S D partnered with Safety Blitz to bring coaches versus poisoning program to parents and students of Hays C I S D. Whereas we can all help, we, all of us can help by learning the facts, starting a conversation. If you are a parent, do not avoid the topic. Initiate dialogue, understand your child's knowledge of the issue and awareness. If you're an educator, start a dialogue about elevated risk of illicit drugs. Don't stigmatize drug addiction, and let people know where to help, where to find help, such as reporting dealers, fake pills to Hays County Sheriff and City of Kyle Police Departments. Contact your Hays County Crime Stoppers tip line, use the Hays Hope Line, or report suspicious activities through the I Watch Texas Community Reporting. Whereas we must all be prepared, keep in mind any pill or powder that is not prescribed by a doctor may contain fentanyl. Know the signs of a poisoning, such as irregular breathing, loss of consciousness. Find naloxone, known as Narcan, near you and know how to administer it, as it is sometimes a life-saving opioid reversal medication. Be prepared to call for help if you witness a poisoning. Call 911 and request emergency medical services. And whereas this danger remains in our communities and even in our schools, as evident by the loss of six wonderful, beautiful, and innocent young students since the summer of 2022, each taken too soon, each Hays C I S D high school has felt the pain and sorrow of losing, of losing students that had promising futures and contributions to make for our community. We will continue our efforts to speak about the fentanyl threat through various agencies and nonprofits, such as the Forever 15 Project, an organization started by a mother, Janelle Rodriguez, who is here today, who lost her child, her beautiful child, Noah Adam Rodriguez. She was just beginning as a sophomore in high school to fentanyl poisoning on August 21, 2022. And whereas the Forever 15 Project is made up of family, friends, students, and volunteers that organize not only to remember and celebrate the lives of loved ones that we've lost, but also to raise awareness and prevention. Loved ones that include six Hays C I S D kids, Noah Adam Rodriguez, Kevin McConville, Garrett Rose, Cindy Peña, Christian Barron, Chloe Hatill, and two Hays County adults, Jacob Britt and Robert Barajas. The Forever 15 Project provides resources for those at risk or those who know someone at risk with information on the dangers of fentanyl. Therefore, be it proclaimed by the city of Kyle that we recognize the month of October as a Fentanyl Poisoning Awareness Month. I'll yield the floor to Mayor Protem. I'll yield the floor to Mayor Protam.
Thank you. For the families that are in the back row that have the photos, may I ask you to come forward with your photos? And if you wouldn't mind facing the audience and the city, because they need to see the beautiful faces that we lost. I'm gonna read a statement that was given to Councilmember Zuniga on behalf of Dr. Eric Wright, the Superintendent of Hayes C I S D. "In a little more than a year's worth of time, Hays C I S D has learned more than it ever thought it was to know about fentanyl. But so before the summer of 2022, fentanyl appeared to be threatening happening everywhere else. But it suddenly viciously attacked the school district family and it did so with terrible speed and unspeakable pain. Since July 2022, six Hayes C I S D students are confirmed to have died from fentanyl poisoning. And the death of a seven precious young student is being investigated as likely caused by a fentanyl overdose. So in strong partnership with Hayes County deputies and with City of Kyle, in particular with the Kyle Police Department and Chief Barnett, the district embarked on a fentanyl awareness campaign. The campaign based on transparency and frank, though difficult conversations about the dangers of fentanyl is saving lives. We continue to be grateful for the City of Kyle and its partnership as we all battle the dreadful evil that is the fentanyl crisis." And if I just might add my, my note of sentiment. This past weekend was homecoming for Lehman and I had the honor of taking my son around, taking photographs with all his friends that invited him at Hero's Memorial Park and at San Marcos Plaza. And as I saw a lot of the families there taking their photos with their kids and their children enjoying themselves, I just began to think about this family that I saw last week at the parade. These individuals should be doing the same thing. They should be enjoying this time with their children, taking photographs of homecoming, getting ready for prom, getting ready for graduation. Ladies and gentlemen, we have a serious drug problem in this community and this country. Those who use the drugs, who sell them, who distribute them are part of the main problem we have. And we continuously ask ourselves, well, what do we do about this? And I kind of do the same thing with me. Tobias, what would you do in this situation? Well, how do you fix this? How do you go about doing it? In my theory and in my thoughts, in my mind, we gotta finally stand up as a community, as a school district and as a city and as parents saying, we're not gonna take this crap anymore. Zero tolerance when it comes to drug use. And I'm not trying to come up here to grandstand, but I'm being serious. This is serious. We've lost beautiful children to this, this overdose. Second of all, we gotta really come at these people who are doing this, these, who are selling, who are pushing this and distributing it. And we gotta really have some strong DA's, prosecutors, judges to make a statement saying we are going to put zero tolerance on these individuals who do this and hold them accountable to the full extent of the law. And then finally, like I do with my kids, I bring it home. I bring it home to the kitchen table that's been missing for many, many years. Having those conversations with your kids. Parents, if you're too busy from home, put your cellphone down and have a conversation with your kid. Talk to them. Let them understand the dangers of what's out there. Because I noticed when I took my son to homecoming dance and he was there with his friends, I dropped him off. I was very happy, but I was, I was scared like crazy. Because that's where it starts in those situations. And I pray to God that when I've had those conversations with my daughter and my son, if they ever get approached by somebody to say, hey, man, you wanna take this hit? It's gonna make you feel good. Or take this pill. It's gonna make you chill, man. Just, just go ahead and do it. That he is strong enough and brave enough that he will say no. And that's what we gotta continue to do. And so from the bottom of my heart, my condolences to all you families for the loss of your children. And just know that the City of Kyle and all of us here will continue to do our best to make sure that we bring this awareness. Thank you.
I was gonna ask Janelle if you wanted to say a few words about the Forever Fifteen Project. If you, if you wanna stand where you are, face the camera. Or you can go to the microphone, sure.
Hello, good evening. I knew that Councilmember Zuniga wanted me to say a few words. And I asked my husband, can you, can you write something for me? And he said, no. And so I'm standing in the back and I'm, you know, what do I say in a speech? I've done hundreds of presentations. And so I looked it up, you know, what to say in a speech. And the first one was quote a leader. Well, even if I did, I didn't want to bring my phone up here and read out it, you know? So I was like, I can't do that. The second one was tell a joke. Well, that's, that's appropriate. And I'm like, well, there's no joke appropriate for this. It was like number eight, share your personal story. Now that I can do. This is Noah. And Noah was 15 years old. And he attended his first two days of his sophomore year. He left school on Friday and didn't return on Monday. Noah was an athlete, an honor student, and just very popular and just loved being kidlike, right? Like Noah, these families are good families. Noah grew up in a, in a good home, stable home, mom and dad, Christian home. We had talks. We were strict parents. And you just don't expect this kind of thing. The stigma needs to end because it's not only the addicts, the junkies. My buddy right here, Adam, is in recovery. One of the most amazing men who have come into my life. Since Noah's passing, my husband and I have started the Forever Fifteen Project in honor of Noah because I knew very early on that I didn't want Noah to just be a sad story. I'm from Hayes County. I grew up in Buta. I was a Hayes Revel. I like to say that. So this county is my county and these kids are my kids. And we have taken, we are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit and we have done many and many of presentations nationwide. We have sent many of children in our own community to rehab. Mental health facilities. A lot of kids, you know, I let them know that you don't have to be struggling with substance abuse to get involved with us because peers listen to peers. So I am in the schools as much as I can be, just to be a face, to be a, an ear for kids to come to. See, having this room full of community members, I think I can speak for everyone means so much to us because a lot of times we feel like we're in this alone. But having your support means so much to us. And this is a community issue. These are our kids. Don't think that because you live on the west side or wherever, that it's not happening there because I promise you it is. This doesn't just affect us families. I did a presentation at Barton Middle School the other day to sixth graders and a young man came up to me crying afterwards and said that his best friend was taken away from him because his family was the mom and dad in Plum Creek who got caught with fentanyl in their house. So it affects everyone. I will be more than happy to have each and every one of you reach out to me and get involved with us. But thank you, Mayor. Thank you, councilmembers. Miguel, like, thank you so much.
Well, thank you. Thank you for all the billboards and all the messaging.
Oh, yes, 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 my billboards. I'm sure y'all have seen it. Right, yeah. Yeah, that, that was amazing. That literally was a community effort. The one billboard that we, that I had wanted to purchase, like, the community just came together and, I mean, I just can't thank you guys enough. Just thank y'all so much.
We'd just be in the back. We'd like to get a group photo with the families. If y'all could come together, council would sit behind the dais. Police officers, y'all wanna come up front too? And thank you to everyone for being out here tonight.
Sorry, my phone's talking to me. All right, on the count of three. One, two, three. All right, thank you.
Janelle, on behalf of council and city staff and everyone, we'd like to give you some flowers. Okay, thank you. Thank you for sharing your story.
All right, thank, thank you, Councilmember Mayor Protam for that item. All right, next we have Agenda Item Number Seven, Presentation of Kiwanis Kyle Buta Texas Fifth Year Anniversary Proclamation. Mayor Protam.
Thank you. As Kiwanis is a global organization of volunteers dedicated to improving the world one child and one community at a time. Just a brief history, the Kiwanis International was founded in Detroit, Michigan in 1915. And in 1916, the first international Kiwanis club was chartered in Canada. The Kiwanis is borrowed from the Native American phrase, Kiwana meaning trade or, or trade our talents. The Kiwanis is the positive influence that one day all children in communities have those that believe in them and will nurture them and provide support services they need to thrive. The Kiwanis organization's primary mission is molding good children, in our community's children, into exceptional adults. The Kiwanis motto is serving the children of the world. So to the President Debbie Serta, Cynthia Bentley, Betty Connolly, Chelsea Flores, Suzarina, Vanessa Westbrook, and the many other Kiwanis, I am proud to congratulate your organization on the outstanding service of our community by reading this proclamation in the Kiwanis honor. Let me put my glasses back on. Whereas the Kiwanis Club Kyle Buta was originally chartered on September 25, 2018 with 15 members, consisted on a variety of backgrounds such as financial advisors, writers, educators, IT, medical research, and retired citizens, seniors. Organization meetings were first held at Orchard Park in Kyle, Texas. And whereas in 2018, the Kiwanis Club of Kyle Buta in partnership with the Police Department, Hayes County ESD Number Five, and the Hayes County Human Resources Kyle Citizens Police Academy Alumni Association, Kyle Area Senior Zone, and Buta Quilters to bring awareness of domestic violence to begin the Pillow of Peace Program, which was mentioned earlier, to collect new pillows and pillowcases. Pillows collected were then given to those who had experienced domestic violence and helped bring those sense of comfort as they lay their heads in a new safe place. For over the years, 5,000 pillows, which I now hear over 6,000, have been collected and distributed throughout the state of Texas. And whereas in 2020, the Kiwanis Club of Kyle Buta, Texas, in the midst of the COVID pandemic, in partnership with the Home Depot, Lowe's, Moon Nurseries, unforgettable friends and family, and Tom Green PTA, created a No Place for Hate Butterfly Garden for students at Tom Green Elementary, Buta and Kyle. Whereas in 2021, the Kiwanis Club of Kyle Buta continued efforts to encourage area children to read in partnership with the Kyle Public Library, set up a mini library reading time at each market day hosted by Kiwana member Suzarina. And I believe Mayor Travis Mitchell, you attended one of those. Thank you, sir. Whereas from 2018 to 2022, the Kiwanis Club of Kyle Buta in partnership with Hayes Constables, Michael Torres, Precinct Two, John Eller, Precinct Five, assisted with yearly holiday Christmas toy distributions to the children of our community. And whereas in 2023, the Kiwanis Club of Kyle Buta, Texas, with the Kiwanis Educating Youth Key Club, was chartered at Lehman High School, Kyle, Texas, with the Kiwana member Vanessa Westbrook as lead advisor. The Key Club focuses on teaching leadership roles for high school students while encouraging involvement within the organization and the importance of community service. So therefore, with the City of Kyle, Texas officially salutes and congratulates the Kiwanis Club of Kyle Buta, Texas, on their fifth anniversary, making a positive impact on the lives of citizens and students in our community on this date, October 7, 2023. Congratulations to the Kiwanis Club for everything you do. And if you wanna go and take a photograph, we could do the same thing if you wanna line up here. If anybody wants to say anything real quick, or just go and take the photo.
Can I get y'all to come in a little bit on the ends on this side? I have like three people hanging over on this side. Just a little bit tighter. I'm sorry. We might have to stack one more. Yeah, just like stack one person. You're just a really good-sized organization. All right, on the count of three. One, two, three. Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, next up is agenda item number eight, proclamation recognizing Immigrants Day. Councilmember Parsley.
Thank you, Mayor. United States of America is a proud place I call home. It's a place that many people like me call home. People that have wanted safety, opportunity, and the freedoms that unfortunately our home countries couldn't longer provide. So today, it is an honor, honor for me to, being an immigrant and naturalized US citizen, to bring forward a proclamation to honor immigrants and the cultural additions they bring to the United States. So whereas on October 28th of 1987, Congress adopted a resolution to recognize the many contributions that immigrants have made to our country and our society. That same year, President Reagan called upon all Americans to celebrate our diversity through cultural displays, celebration, festivals, and activities. And whereas the United States has long history of providing hope and opportunity to people from all points of the globe who are intrepid enough to make the journey to our country and to seek to realize their hopes, dreams, and potential. It is the spirit and willingness to risk all in the pursuit of something greater that has benefited and blessed the United States with the diverse and dynamic society we have today that is the envy of our countries, of countries worldwide. And whereas, as an immigrant myself, I'm well aware of the sacrifices that immigrants must make to become citizens of our great nation. I am also well aware of the incredible opportunities this country has to offer to all who are bold enough to pursue their dreams. Today, it is my privilege and honor to proclaim October 28th as National Immigrants Day. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the City of Kyle that we recognize October 28th as National Immigrants Day. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Councilmember Parsley. Does anybody have anything they'd like to add to that? Councilwoman Zunga.
Oh, I have to. Thank you, Councilmember Daniella Parsley, for bringing this important proclamation to honor the contribution and diversity that immigrants have added to building our nation and for the love and admiration that immigrants have for America. So I'm gonna say a little bit my personal story. As, I'm also a first-generation immigrant, and I remember my parents working very hard when they arrived here with very little resources. But we understood the opportunities that America had available for us if we worked hard, if we learned a skill, and if we found education as a foundation to be able to get into the middle class. And so my advice to, to new immigrants is to work hard, learn as much as you can, because the American dream is attainable if you're willing to invest in your journey and build relationships with your community, because the citizens of this country are generous and want to see everyone with determination and ambition reach their full potential. So this is a land of opportunity. Thank you, Daniella.
Thank you, Councilwoman Zunga. Any further commentary? Okay, next up is agenda item number nine, upcoming parks and recreation events. Ms. Espinoza.
Uh-oh. That might not be the right.
Add title here.
Yep, it's all right. So I will just go ahead and go over the presentation. So Mayor and Council, Mariana Espinoza, Parks and Recreation Director. I'll give you a brief overview of the upcoming events for the months of October, November, and December. So for October, we already had a couple of big events this past weekend. And we still have next Friday, the Buggy Ween Dance for Individuals with Disabilities. It is at the Gemstone Palace on Friday, October 27th, from 5:00 to 8:00. And then we turn around on Saturday, on Saturday, October 28th, with our Halloween at Center Street Trick or Treat from 12:00 to 3:00 at City Square Park. And both events are free to the public. And then we still have a couple of online contests going on this month. The online pumpkin carving contest, online yard decorating contest, and the best costume contest. And so if you just go to our website for City of Kyle October Halloween events, the email to, email in your submissions is listed there. In November, we will have another parade, our Veterans Day Parade honoring our veteran community on Saturday, November 11th. The parade begins at 12:00. But at 9:00 AM that day, the Market Day will start. So the Market Day will run from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM with the parade going through at 12:00. Registration to be a vendor ends November 6th. And registration to be in the parade ends November 3rd. And for all those in the parade, there will be a mandatory meeting and their spaces until all spaces are full. And then, one of the big days we've been waiting for is on Saturday, November 18th, from 2:00 to 6:00 PM. We will have La Vete Park ribbon cutting and official grand opening. The band Weezer will play from 2:30 to 3:30. And then the local and popular brand of Broken Arrow will shut down the event from 4:30 to 6:00. We have a cornhole tournament, a chili cook-off. Registration for both is currently online. And registration ends November 8th. And then we get to December, which is really, a really fun part of the year. So we have our Holiday Light Display downtown at Mary Kyle Hartson Park. Santa arrives on December 1st. The event begins at 4:00 PM with the tree lighting at approximately 6:15 PM. The event's completely free, open to the public. And then for the rest of December, we have events going on throughout the entire month. So on December 3rd, it's a Sunday, we have Sweet Sundays. December 7th, Noche de Navidad, with mariachi bands and different kinds of musics out there. December 8th, The Grinch will be in the park. December 10th, we have Sunday Fun Day with a bunch of lawn games, scavenger hunt. December 12th, 13th, and 14th, our awesome Police Department helps the Parks Department take Santa Claus around town. So on December 12th, Santa will be going through the northeast part of town. December 13th, on the southeast part of town. And on December 14th, on the west side of town. And then on December 14th, we have Slow Jam Thursday with a live jazz performer. On December 15th, yay, thank you, Grant, we have our Fairy Tale Friday. And so one of the new displays that we have this year is a castle. And so on that day, we're gonna be encouraging everyone to come out looking like prince and princesses and to help us enjoy the fairy tale evening. December 17th, Sippin' Stroll. December 21st, Throwback Thursday. December 22nd, Gingerbread Friday. And then new this year, we also have a Holiday Light Trail at Lake Kyle Park. So we will have some lights and photo ops. And don't forget, on December 1st, when Santa arrives, we have a gingerbread contest. So gingerbread submissions will be taking place, registration's already online, and then we'll make the official announcement on December 1st. And that wraps up the year, and then we see January 1st at the Polar Bear Splash. Any questions?
Goes fast. Councilmember Floris Kael.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I do have two questions. First of all, who was the singer at the Founder's Day Parade? What's his name?
The first singer?
Yes.
Moven Melvin Brown.
Moven Melvin Brown? He was amazing. Remind me of Otis, Otis Redding, I think that's his name. Okay, I hope we can book him again. I, I would love to sing for like traditional Santa Claus songs. It'd be amazing.
Moven Melvin has performed at our Music Mondays during 25 Days of Christmas. He's looking forward to coming back for the holiday season.
Awesome. Okay. And then this budget season, we approved a new full-time employee. I think it was an inclusive employee, and I was just wondering what the status was on that.
Yes, ma'am. We submitted the requisition for the CTRS today, and it should be posted on the upcoming week or something.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Oh, Moven Melvin is performing on Jazz Night. Claudia, just.
Councilmember Parsley.
Yes, so I am so excited. I'm so, I'm like, where's the gingerbread? Where's the gingerbread? I don't see a gingerbread. When is the online pumpkin deadline?
Amy.
Today? No. I just don't want my pumpkin to rotten if it gets too hot. And I've been just like so excited about it, so. It would be really nice if you guys can push it a little bit so I can carve a pumpkin. Not, not that I'm gonna win, but I would love to participate. And so, and the second is, I am really excited to see this place other than the square. So thank you so much for bringing things to Lake Kyle. That makes me super excited. And any type of support that you need for anything, please reach out, because I, this is all that I am about. Like Christmas and fall and please, like, you, you have all my full support for that.
Thank you.
Mine too.
Anyone else? All right. Moving through, next up is the consent agenda. Does anybody have any items they wish to discuss or to pull? Councilmember Parsley.
I had a question about number 13, so I don't know if we can pull that one out. And then, I guess a little bit of number 10, if I could get a an explanation like about the environmental services we're getting? And if that was not approved before?
You want to pull those items?
Yes, please.
Any other items? All right, make a motion to approve agenda items 11 and 12. Motion by Mayor, seconded by Councilmember Floris Kael. Is there a discussion on that motion? All is in favor, say aye. All opposed. Our motion carries seven to zero. Next up is agenda item 10, approved task order number three to Lockwood Andrews Newman and Newman in an amount not to exceed $23,535 for environmental services related to the Windy Hill Road Bond project. This item is sponsored by Mr. Cantalupo. Councilmember Parsley.
So when we approve, how do you, hi, Joe. When we approve the last amounts for the road bond, was it like 70 million, right? Was this not included there?
This particular task order, the request for additional environmental services, was not included in the original scopes of work. What we're proposing is that this comes out of the contingency that was already set aside. So the scope of work was not included, but because of the contingency, the money's available with what was already approved.
Okay, how many other environmental studies will we need to do that were not initially budgeted in the scope of work that we will need to pull?
It just depends, because the way this gets done, and what happened in this case with Windy Hill Road, is that the engineering companies, the design engineers, were contracted to do what we call a desktop survey. They look at readily available data. In this case, when they looked at the site, right, the project site, and they looked at everything from soils to, you know, the, the availability and history of water, and they looked at the possibility of the presence of archaeological and other cultural resources. They did a report based on that desktop survey, as we call it. They submitted to the Texas Historical Commission, and THC, as we call it, responded back and said, there's enough information there where you have to go back and do more detailed studies. So we, we don't scope that additional detailed study until the THC tells us we need it. So until the other reports start coming in, we don't know for sure if there's gonna be one more, two more, or three more. But again, Councilmember, the contingency that we build into those initial cost estimates, right, one of its purposes is to deal with things that pop up that you can anticipate, and this is one of those things that's popped up.
Could you remind me the contingency that we have, the amount?
I, I don't remember for this project, but it's, it's pretty hefty. This is not, this $23,000 and change is, is, we probably won't even, it's a blip.
Because I am, I think about contingency when we are actually building.
Yes.
And, and I know we are probably gonna go through that contingency like it was water. So I would like to see if there is any sort of anticipation on any other additional things that we're gonna be, something that is gonna come up, because my understanding was that 70 million was going to be plenty for designing, engineering, and other kinds of studies that we needed to for this road. My hope was to not have to discuss anything bond-related until 2025.
So.
Not even $26,000, so.
That, that would, that would be our hope too. But unfortunately, right, the way the design process works, especially when you start getting into investigations, like geotechnical investigations, in this case, environmental investigations, you don't know what you're gonna find until you begin those investigations. You know, it, we keep very close track of the budgets. We had an environmental person look at it. Our corridor managers looked at it, and they believed that it's reasonable, but it's also necessary. There is no way to move the project forward without getting clearance from THC. And so they need to go out. There will be a backhoe that will do some deep excavations. And then there, they will send folks out that will actually walk the project area and do shallow shovel testing to look for the presence of cultural and archaeological artifacts. And if they find them, they document them, they report on them to THC, and that's how the project gets permission to move forward.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 10.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Parsley, seconded by Councilmember Floris Kael. Do we approve agenda item number 10? Is there a discussion on the motion? Councilmember Floris Kael.
So I'm looking at the backup, and can we just confirm? It says professional will work expeditiously to complete the services described herein by July 31st, 2024. Is that, is that for this, this order, the task order?
I, I believe that it is. It's, so there's a lot of processing that takes place. Not all of it is fieldwork. They have to get write of entry. They've got to get the equipment out. They've got to take it and document it. That is, you know, that is the worst-case scenario. Our job, and we continue to do that, is to move things along as quickly as possible.
Okay, I second it, and I'm gonna approve it. I want to be realistic with everybody, including ourselves, when we look at the timeline of these roads. And, and maybe explain why we are, why we say yes, so we can move along. And so I just wanted to put that date out there as, as a realization. It's gonna be at least six months before this part of it is, is complete.
And, and, and again, Councilmember, a lot of it is not the actual work. It's, it's the processing. There are, I mean, there are tons and tons of projects to go on throughout the state, and THC, you know, they, they need time to process and approve.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? Mayor Protam.
Just, just real quick, referencing the presentation, Joe. I see that it had Windy Hill and the TLC, and the Texas Historical Commission, correct?
Yes.
But then also, on the same presentation, on this agenda item, you also have the Jaxi Hayes Task Order Consideration for, it looks like it's agenda item number 14.
Yes, yes.
Combined with this one here. So what, what are we approving? If we go with just this item right here? Because.
Yes, Councilmember, the presentations were just grouped together for convenience.
Okay. And again, just to answer what, to kind of reiterate with Councilman Parsley, Councilman Parsley saying, are we gonna have more of these change orders in the, in the future going forward? But I see we need to, we need to get these studies done. Are you?
Councilmember Parsley.
I'm sorry. So can, can we get a breakdown of what has been spent now? At least so we know, because I, I thought of, I'm trying to understand where, where, what we approve already went, because we still have a ton of years till we see this road bond finish. And from the almost $400 million that we approved, 70 have gone, and now I'm really wondering if we're gonna have enough. So I would like to know what, where, where would we have advanced went? Where has it gone?
So if, if we were prepared tonight to give you a budget update for the projects, the budget for this particular project hasn't changed. We're just, but we would highlight for you that we moved money from. We're just, but we would highlight for you that we moved money from one pile to the other to accommodate this. We do keep track of the budgets. We're planning, and I hope I get the date right, right, to come back on November 14th, right? Is that the next meeting? To give you a deeper project update, which includes the status of the budgets and the money that has been allocated so far, and the money that's been spent so far, project by project, and for the program as a whole.
Should we postpone item 14 until then?
Mayor, council, my recommendation is that you approve this item tonight. It is a, it's $23,000, every dollar is important, but in the scope of the project, we believe it's a fairly de minimis amount. The contingency will be in the millions of range that we have the project. Joe and I meet weekly on all of the road bond projects to make sure that we stay up to date on those, and that we monitor the budget. We believe we're still on track with both the timeline and the budget, but we can come back to you and provide you with all those details, and then some more as well on November 14th. But my recommendation is to not delay it so we can move forward on the schedule of the project.
No, I don't mind approving that we approve. I'm just talking about item 14, but we can talk about it then.
Yeah, and item 14, we'll have that separate discussion in a moment.
Well, there is a motion on the table, so...
All right, any further discussion? Sorry, I didn't want to, is your hand up or no? Okay, all right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, motion carries seven to zero. All right, next up is agenda item 13, approve a license agreement between the city of Kyle and Rachel and Ruben Guerrero for property located at 213 South Old Highway 81 to allow parking to encroach City Rideaway on East Moore Street. This is Mr. Atkinson's item. Councilmember Parsley.
I just have questions about what are the repercussions of us doing this? Is there gonna, are there gonna be any issues?
No, ma'am, we've done this several times with other projects in the past. For example, the Carolina Marketplace, which is right behind the Target Shopping Center on the undeveloped lot. It's a function of making sure we get street parking in urban areas, but also, at the same time, limit expanded maintenance of those areas that for public works. They've told us several times that if we're gonna be working with developers or applicants to create street parking, that they want to see a license agreement to where those folks ultimately maintain that street parking.
So, we won't be maintaining it?
No, ma'am.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to approve item 13.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Parsley, seconded by Councilmember Floris Kales. Do we approve agenda item 13? Is there a discussion on the motion? Councilmember Floris Kales.
I do just have a genuine concern about if the people in these areas that are covered by our downtown and whose homes are affected, going from residential to CBD 1. I think it's kind of important that we educate and let them know how that process works, what it looks like. I think sometimes people still don't understand the consequences of not living in their home or maybe using it temporarily as a business. And so, maybe moving forward, we could just make sure that there's a general understanding. Historically, the people that live in these areas are longtime Kyle residents, and so, I would just like to make sure that they have a good understanding of what's going on.
Sounds good. All right, Mayor Protim.
Just one last before we vote. Would this be utilized for public parking?
Yes, sir, the areas along East Moore Street, which is referenced in the license agreement. Yes, sir, those will be public parking spaces.
Yeah, I guess, not, of course, I'm gonna approve this, but I just, to reiterate what Councilmember Floris is saying, especially for downtown, you know, you've got homes that have been there, and then if we're gonna have another one that's gonna be using it for commercial or public, where it's gonna be like some understanding of some boundaries, because let's just say, it's gonna be, it's kind of right across from Railhouse, correct? On this...
Yes, sir, on the, near the south end.
So, if, let's say, there's overflow parking from there, then they can go and utilize this, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, just want to make sure that we also know that if the homeowners know that they'll be able to be allowed to use that kind of parking spaces.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, Will. Our next up is agenda item number 14, approve task order number six to Pape Dawson Consulting Engineers LLC in an amount not to exceed $450,567.75 for development of a final design schematic of the intersection of Jackseey Hayes Trail and Veterans Drive, and the reconstruction of Jackseey Hayes Trail from Veterans Drive to 1,200 feet east of Veterans Drive. Mr. Cantalupo.
Thank you, mayor. So, council, I want to, just a little bit of background. This is the intersection. And the thing to keep in mind is that when this, this project, right, this was one of the project areas that was started well in advance of the bond. And what is, turns out, is that when the bond was initiated, the projects were initiated, we went back, right, with the design engineer, Pape Dawson, and when they began to finalize the schematic and toward moving into design, they realized that this particular intersection would not operate at an acceptable level of service to allow the project, the rest of the project to operate properly and to a good level of service. So, they did an analysis of what it would take to get the intersection to operate correctly. And what they came up with was this improvement to Jackseey Hayes Trail, right? And so, it adds, it accommodates pedestrian movements, the vibe sidewalk. It adds a center turn lane, it adds 11-foot lanes, and extends the turn lane that 1,200 feet passed. Now, the thing to keep in mind when you're looking at this diagram is that this is a text dot standard. So, the 11-foot lanes, the smaller, median, the city's transportation plan has a much more robust section. It would have a wider median, significantly wider, and it would have four 12-foot lanes instead of four foot 11 lanes, four foot, I'm sorry, four 11-foot lanes. And it would extend much further east, and it would actually affect all those properties on the south side, all those smaller, narrower lots with the numbers on them. We're moving with the text dot section because it is significantly less expensive, and more importantly, it is way less impactful to the property owners on the south side, especially, and a little bit on the north. But it's needed to make the rest of the project operate properly. And I'll pause for a second and see if there's any follow-up.
Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Cantalupo? Councilmember Zuniga.
Yeah, so on that, on that note, it wasn't part of the original bond, but it is an upgrade to that intersection because the proposed road will function better. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. So, basically, when they dusted off the plans, right, for the other project, and they did what they're supposed to do, which is to make sure everything will function properly, they looked at the traffic, and the traffic had grown to the point where you need to improve the intersection. In order to make the intersection operate properly, you need to improve that distance of Jackseey History Trail.
So...
277.
Well, the concerns, I guess, I've heard is, do we have enough money still in that proposed road bond to cover the added upgrade to this intersection strip?
So, and here's the considerations, right? Your question is timely. So, this task order covers the final schematic design, right? And right now, there is enough funding in the current budget to cover the design fees. What has not been identified yet is where the money for construction will come from. And as it stands now, it's just over $9 million. Now, some of that is contingency, right, building contingency for the additional work. The utilities are quite expensive, they're just over, to bury the utilities, it's just over $2 million. And so, it adds up awfully quick. But what we're recommending is that we design everything at once so you can make sure it all works together. Our hunch right now, and I do call it a hunch on purpose because we need to do more analysis, is that the rest of the project, right, the old Stagecoach Road, and, you know, everything it's connected to, we're determining whether or not that it all needs to be done together, or that this can come at a later date. But we're convinced that it should all be designed at once, so you can plan ahead, even if you don't, if you're not able to construct it all now, and even if you can't construct it all now. But in order to really understand that, we need to get into the design just a tiny bit more. So, again, I'll simplify it, is that the $450,000 would cover the final schematic design. We've yet to identify where the funding for the construction would come from, but we're looking at all the budgets, right? We have updated cost estimates. We're gonna see what projects, if any, went up, if any, go down, and if there's the potential for moving, you know, money from one project to the next, at least at this level.
So, if we did the design work, would that be validated for an extension of time? I mean, or would they become invalidated with more growth and if we don't work on the construction part of it? Like, how, what would be our period that we would have on these designs without having to redesign? If we don't get to the...
I don't know that offhand, but it's a very good question, and, you know, and I could get the answer for you.
Yeah, I mean, I'd like to know that if we do pay for the designs, that we can hold on to those for a period of time and not having to do another redesign as our city grows and these roads get done.
Yes, sir. The other consideration, there's the other side of the coin, which is that this might be necessary to make everything work as efficiently as possible. And that's when the tough decisions come into play, right, is whether or not we can, you know, balance the rest of the project work to see if you could find the money for the construction, or if there are other things we can do to the design to maybe save some money. But, you know, there'll be two things. One is whether or not it's needed, right, to get the project to function correctly. And right now, we're thinking it is, but we're, you know, we'll continue to evaluate that as we move forward. And then the other is, if it is needed and the money is not available, what do you do? And right now, I don't know that you can answer that question as a council, and we can't provide a recommendation on that yet.
Thank you, Joe.
I would just say, as part of that, as we get that information, we'll have opportunities to budget for that. If we decide that there's not enough savings in the road bond project to accommodate this, we can look at other ways to do that through our capital program, if that's the desire of the council. But part of it is trying to understand exactly what the cost would be and the impact on the roadway going forward.
Councilmember Floris Kales.
All right, thank you. So, discussing this is an emotional roller coaster for me, because the price is steep, it's gonna be expensive. But I drive this road every day, and I know what it's like, so I know of the need. But going back to the roots, I will say I do appreciate figuring out the schematics before we start anything else. And even if there was a way to try to, once we get further along, to incorporate things like easements, I'd like to see that started before the construction of the road begins. Lehman Road was held up for quite a long time, and part of that was because of easements. And so, if we can get as much of that backwork done as possible, so when it comes time to build the road, all they're doing is having to build the road, I would appreciate it. And for that reason, I do support spending the money now. $9 million is gonna be $12 million in three years. And so, as much as I don't want to spend $9 million, I also don't want to bond out another $294 million to tax, to the taxpayers. And so, for that reason, I'd like to approve agenda item number 14, please.
Second. All right, motion by Councilwoman Floris Kales, seconded by Mayor Protim. Do we approve agenda item 14? Is there a discussion on the motion?
We did a, I don't know if it was for the same road, that change order, or the task order that we did in March 17, was that for, this was for environmental clearance. Never mind.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed.
Nay.
All right, motion carries six to one. Next up, agenda item 15, approve a resolution establishing the date for a public hearing to be held on December 5, 2023, is required under Chapter 395 of the Texas Local Government Code to consider, discuss, or review the update to the water and wastewater land use assumptions, water and wastewater capital improvements plan, and imposition of updated water and wastewater impact fee amounts. Mr. Barba.
Good evening, mayor and council. Leon Barba, City Engineer. Mayor and council, as you're aware, we're trying to update our water and wastewater impact fees. Just to let everyone know, we use those fees for rehabilitating, reconstructing, upgrading, and in some cases, building new lines to serve our community. So, these impact fees are needed to keep that construction going. The last time we updated these fees was back in 2017, and you can imagine how much prices have gone up since 2017. So, the impact fees we're using today reflect the 2017 prices. So, we do need an increase in the impact fees, whether we like it or not. The, this is a process that we've had to go through. For example, last week, on October 10, we had a meeting of the Impact Fee Advisory Committee. We discussed a report that was prepared by HDR Engineering, and they approved the motion to pass the, to support that report. The vote was five to two, but we did get it passed, and it is here now in front of council. So, the next step in the process is for us to approve this resolution, setting up the hearing, which is on December 5. At that meeting, we will have the consultant here that will be able to explain the numbers and the reasons for some of the numbers that we're gonna be presenting to you that night. So, I didn't have any other presentation to make to you. I do have a summary of what we talked at the October 10 meeting, if you want to see that, so I can go through that.
That is something that we'll get on December 5 as well?
That is correct, yes.
Okay, I don't have any problem setting the public hearing in motion. We're gonna get our chance to discuss in earnest. I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution establishing the date for the public hearing to be held on December 5.
Second.
All right, motion by mayor, seconded by Councilmember Parsley. Is there a discussion on the motion? Councilmember Zuniga.
The video from October 10 isn't visible yet on the city webpage?
It is.
It's not.
I was able to see it on the channel.
Oh, on YouTube?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, for not?
On the city website.
Would it be possible to still increase those impact fees? I did listen to the conversation. I was aware of the five to two vote, and we did come down significantly from the initial $18,000 impact fee down to 12. And there was a, there was a middle area of 16, which ended up falling back down to 12. So, Leon, I mean, the numbers seem to be calculated high in the beginning, as you said, but I do believe that we are in the lower end, although you said we are in the top three highest impact fee cities. But this is a one-time thing of when you can get impact fees to build your infrastructure. And waiting the three years is a long time for those fees to increase. So, that would be my only, my only thing, is is there a path to still ask for an increase before this December public forum?
That would be council's decision at the December 5 meeting. That would be your option.
Would another option be bring it back with different numbers?
I don't know if that would be possible. The consultant has pretty well, we got some comments, we got some concerns, we looked at it, we agreed with some of those comments, some of the comments we did not agree with. So, we made revisions where we thought it was appropriate. But I don't think the consultant's gonna change his numbers at this point in time. And bear in mind that when we presented that first round, that was three times... And bear in mind that when we presented that first round, that was three times what we're paying today for impact fees. Today's impact fees are sixty-three, sixty-one, six thousand three hundred sixty-one dollars for water and wastewater. We're gonna go up to over twelve thousand for that impact fee for water and wastewater.
Well, my only feedback is I know we're anxious to discuss the numbers. I'm anxious to discuss the numbers as well, but this item calls for a public hearing, which then brings forward the, the consultant's discussion. So I have lots of thoughts and feedback on that, but I think that the meeting where we actually get to make that decision with the consultants is the time to debate the value and merit of the analysis that they performed.
I'd like P and Z to get a chance to look at it again. It would be nice to have a unanimous decision. I, I completely understand that we rank pretty high up there, not as high as Flugerville, which is twenty-nine thousand dollars, quite impressive. But we are the fastest-growing city in Hayes County, and we are one of the fastest-growing cities in, in the state of Texas. So in order to maintain our infrastructure and keep up and allow this development to continue to keep happening, I am really nervous. And I totally understand that we can bring this back and we can talk about it, but again, I really want P and Z to take a good look at this and to give us their, their information. For me, that was extremely helpful to go back and watch that video. My concern was that it was after a meeting with the Home Builders Association and addressing their concerns is, then it came down even more. And so I, that's not something I wanna see. There was a commissioner who made a valid point of it's the home builders looking out for themselves, but who's looking out for the residents? And the way, in my eyes, the way it works is, the more impact fees we have, the less likely that we need to continue to bond out, as we have been, 'cause we're able to keep up with the growth. And so I'm not a fan of the twelve thousand dollars. I'm not saying it has to be the eighteen, although even if we were, we would only raise one level, and that would be above Flugerville, Southwest Area One. So we would still be second, third highest. So I, and again, I would like P and Z to take a second look at it, but ultimately, it's gonna be what council wants to do.
Any discussion on the recommendation? Well, again, I, I understand we're anxious to make our points and our opinions known about what we think that number is, but there's going to be an opportunity for a robust discussion with analysis when we get to all actually make our points. This just calls for a public hearing. So I, I don't see a reason not to proceed.
Second, the motion.
All right, I'll make a, I'll make a motion to approve agenda item, oh, I think we already did that, right? Sorry. All right, there's a motion and a second. Is there discussion on the table? All those favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed.
Nay.
All right, motion carries six to one. All right, next up is agenda item number sixteen and seventeen. These items are being requested to be postponed to December fifth. First reading, agenda item number sixteen, first reading in ordinance of the city of Kyle, Texas, annexing approximately thirty-seven point nine-nine acres of land located at three oh one BB Road in Hayes County, Texas, including the abutting streets, roadways, and rights of ways into corporate limits of the city. This item has a public hearing that was left open at the last meeting. Are you asking me to close the public hearing or to leave the public hearing open as?
I would ask that this item has the public hearing kept open until the twelve-fifth meeting.
All right, if there are no objections, I'm gonna open the public hearing now. Seeing none, the public hearing is open. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward and speak? All right, seeing none, I'm going to make a motion to postpone this item until December fifth.
Second.
Motion by Mayor, second by Councilmember Parsley. Is there discussion on that motion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed.
Aye. Thank you.
All right, motion carries seven to zero. Next up is agenda item seventeen, same thing. It's a first reading in ordinance meeting chapter fifty-three of the city of Kyle, Texas, purpose of rezoning approximately one hundred one acres to plan unit development for seventy-two acres and retail services and approximately twenty-nine acres for R three-three. This item has a public hearing. Is there anyone who objects to opening this public hearing up? Seeing none, public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward and speak on this item? All right, seeing none, I'm gonna motion to postpone this item until December fifth. Motion by Mayor, second by Councilmember Floris Kael. Is there discussion on that motion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed. All right, motion carries seven to zero. Next up, agenda item eighteen, public hearing to consider proposed assessments to be levied against assessment property within improvement area number two, Southwest Kyle Public Improvement District number one pursuant to the provisions of chapter three seventy-two. Mr. McClany.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. It's always good to be here. Mark McClany with Samco Capital Markets. We have John Snyder with P three. We have Chris Guevara with Norton Rose Fulbright. Normally, you'll see Stephanie Lieby here for that. She's receiving a national award for bond counsel, so she's in Chicago getting an award. Your, your bond lawyer is one of the best in the country, so.
We know that, for sure.
Very good.
Yes.
We've got the developers' representatives here, and this is to open up a public hearing regarding the actual assessments. They're gonna be the next item on the agenda. That's everything I have for them.
Are there any objections to opening the public hearing? Seeing none, the public hearing is now open. Is there anyone who wishes to come forward and speak? All right, seeing none, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Public hearing is now closed. Next up is agenda item number nineteen. Do you wanna do nineteen, twenty together?
Yes.
All right, agenda item nineteen, consideration and approval of an ordinance of the city of Kyle, of the city council of the city of Kyle, Texas, accepting and approving an amended and restated service and assessment plan for improvement area number two, assessment rolls for the Southwest Kyle Public Improvement District number one. And agenda item number twenty, consideration and approval of an ordinance approving and authorizing the issuance of sale of city of Kyle, Texas, special assessment revenue bonds, series twenty twenty-three, Southwest Kyle Public Improvement District number one. Mr. McClany.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Mark McClany, Samco Capital Markets. Want to introduce two more people, Robert Rivera and Tripp Davenport with FMS. They're the bond underwriters for the pit bonds. The first item is to approve the service and assessment plan, which sets out the assessments for this. That will then allow us to have the bond payments to cover, to cover the actual bonds. The project, of course, is Southwest Kyle, just south of here, downtown. This is phase two bonds. Phase one went well. They're finishing that up. Phase two is, phase two, first half is nearly completed. The second part is going to be funded with these bonds. They've spent a lot of their money already. We went to market today. FMS led that underwriting. Interest rates higher than we've done in the past, but very good compared to where we've been in the market or what the market has been seeing on, see if I can get to that. If you can read that, the five million four, can we enlarge that? No. Well, yeah, we can. The five million four was broken into two maturities. The first one in twenty thirty, that interest rate came in at five and three quarters, where it was offered to the investor at five eighty-five. The twenty forty-eight term totaled four million seven oh five. They went out at six and three quarters and sold to the investors at six seventy-eight. That's their return. The bonds were sold, three orders, they went Naveen, High Yield Fund in Chicago, Goldman Sachs out of New York, and Franklin Funds out of California, all put in orders for all of the bonds. They will be divided up through FMS through the process over the next couple of days on, on being awarded what bonds they get. The markets have been very difficult, as you've seen interest rates continue to rise. It's making it harder for these investors, and these underwriters did a fine job getting them into these, those funds. It's not easy right now, and not all bonds are getting completed. So the fact that this is a phase two, it's the city of Kyle, people understand it. Naveen, Goldman, and Franklin have all bought pids from you all before. Understand what's going on in Kyle, as you all mentioned earlier, fast, one of the fastest growing cities in, in the state, also in the country. You are on the map, and people want to be involved in your bonds. It is our recommendation that we go ahead and award to FMS for them to go ahead and sell. Funds would be available in about one month.
All right, thank you, Mr. McClany. Does anybody have any questions for the presenter? Motion's?
Motion to approve item nineteen.
And twenty?
And twenty, yeah.
Second.
All right, motion by Councilmember Parsley, second by Councilmember Floris Kael, that we approved agenda items nineteen and twenty. Is there discussion on that motion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? All opposed. All right, motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, Mark. Any final comments, final parting words? Motion adjourned?
Second.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank y'all.
Thank you.